Good evening and welcome. This is a regular meeting of the Princeton Planning Board on Thursday, January 5th, 2023. Pursuant to Section 13 of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of the time and place of this meeting has been given by prominently posting the amended resolution of regularly scheduled meetings of the Planning Board of Princeton for February 2022 through January 2023. A copy was filed with the Clerk of Princeton on January 7, 2022. Legal notice on the adoption of said resolution was published in the January 14, 2022 edition of the Princeton Packet. Notice of this meeting also has been posted to the municipal website, Pursuant to our Executive Order 107, due to the ongoing state of emergency in New Jersey regarding COVID-19 coronavirus, notice that during the declared state of emergency, all regular and special meetings of the Princeton Planning Board will be held electronically via Zoom. That notice was transmitted to the Princeton Packet Town Topics and The Times and was filed with the Clerk of Princeton on April 8, 2020, and again on January 6, 2021. Please note that this meeting is also is being recorded. During hearings on applications for development, members of the public will have an opportunity to comment and ask questions. Questions may be asked after each applicant's witness has testified. Public comment is heard by the board after an applicant's representatives have finished their presentations and have been questioned by the Planning Board members and staff. Those wishing to comment orally should virtually raise your hand by clicking on the raise hand icon at the bottom of your screen or participating by phone by pressing star nine. Oral comments will be taken in order in which hands were raised. We ask with respect that members of the public express your views in three minutes or less. We will have a countdown clock to help speakers keep track of time. Please note that speakers who exceed three minutes will be interrupted. Inappropriate public comment containing obscenity, hate speech, or leading to matters not before the board will be muted. First order of business, our announcements?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Philip. I'll make some of these announcements.
Mr. Bodigheimer? Mr. Chow?
Sorry, I'm here.
Oh, Mr. Bodigheimer? Hello?
Hello.
Mr. Chow? Phil?
Here.
Thank you. Mr. Cohen? Mr. McGowan?
Happy New Year.
Mr. O'Donnell? Mr. Quinn?
Here.
Ms. Sacks? Mr. Taylor?
Here. Happy New Year for me as well.
And Mrs. Wilson?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Great, thanks, Carrie. And I just have a few announcements. But first, I want to say good evening, Planning Board members. Happy New Year, as Alvin said, and thanks again for another service, another year of service to Princeton. This Planning Board always has amazing attendance. Tonight, not as much. But there are reasons why, through no fault of the members, the two council members are finishing up their reorganization meeting tonight. It started at 5:30. I don't expect that they'll attend here. Mr. Bodigheimer and Mr. Chow are both reappointed. So welcome back. And so Julie and Zenon, their terms were up. But as we've done in the past, we waited for the other boards that they're on the Environmental Commission and the HPC to recommend, as is kind of tradition here. So they've not been reappointed yet until those groups meet. And we're seeing ways that we could streamline this for next year. And also, if there's any way to make sure for our next meeting on the 19th that they're available, the two council members will be available then. But we're trying to make sure we get them in while we're also making sure that we're doing everything correctly. That being said, the first or the subdivision case you'll be hearing tonight is in a suggested historic district. So there is a report from the Historic Preservation Officer. So I think Julie might be in attendance and she may help present that. But she won't be taking any actions tonight. And the reason being is her one-year term was up and she still needs to be formally reappointed pending that HPC meeting. So that being said, we also, Ms. Philip sent out a few weeks ago a request for which committees you would like to be considered for subcommittees of the board. So please continue to send in your requests on that so we can figure out a way to do that with committees that you're interested in. And those are my announcements. I will also announce, because I've been doing it, that we have our next Steering Committee meeting of the Planning Board on January 25 at 2:00 PM. So I'll remind about that on the 19th. Yes, Ms. Wilson, did you have a question?
I guess it's just point of clarification that the steering, the master plan update Steering Committee.
Oh, yes. I forgot a few words there. Yes, the Master Plan Steering Committee.
Thank you.
January 25th. Yeah, yeah.
And I have one question. I know we set up a retreat for the 21st, correct? And when we talked about this last year, it was either at an officers' meeting or at the full board. The thought was to solicit questions from members of the board and then I would put that together in some kind of outline fashion. Has any of that been done, Justin, or?
We've not done so yet. I'm drafting an agenda and I hope to get that out to the members soon. And I think that's a great idea. I'll also include to provide any questions in advance or that to get people thinking or to get you to prepare anything.
Yeah, and if they do have the time and inclination to prepare questions in advance, if they could circulate it not only to the SEF but to me as well so that I could, you know, put something together.
Absolutely.
Okay, so the first order of business is our reorganization and the nomination of the Chair. Are there any board members present who would like to make that nomination?
Before we do that, does anybody need to take an oath of office before a vote is taken? Because we have members who are reappointed. So Jerry, I'm wondering whether oaths need to be taken before the vote.
Yes, they should come first. And let me ask this. I know in the past, at least some members, when they were reappointed, gets sworn in either by the clerk or by the council. We've sworn people in as well. When that hasn't happened, who were those, who were the members who'd been reappointed? Nat and Jack, is it you or Phil?
Phil.
Have you been sworn in by anybody, both of you? No? Okay, so what I'll do is I will read the oath of office. Usually, you know, when it's in person, I just distribute it. You fill it in and that's the end of it. But what we'll do is I'll read the oath of office. You swear or affirm what you have to swear or affirm. And then if you could arrange with, Carrie, if you could arrange with them to get signed copies, they get copies to be signed. So I will start the reading. And then if you could, you know, I'll stop every sentence or so and if you could repeat what I said. So why don't you both, why don't you both raise your hands and unmute yourselves? Okay, I.
I, Nat Bodigheimer.
And Phil Chow? Phil, are you? I can't hear you.
When he, when he has his earbuds in the sound.
Okay, there you go.
Sincerely profess and swear.
Sincerely profess and swear.
Sincerely profess and swear.
That I do and will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I do and will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the government.
True faith and allegiance.
To the, to the government established in this state.
The government established in this state.
The government established in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution.
I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will faithfully and impartially and justly.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully, impartially and justly.
Perform all the duties of the Office of Class Four Planning Board Member.
Perform all the duties of a Class Four. A Class Four Planning Board Member.
Good. According to, according to the best of my ability and understanding.
According to the best of my ability and understanding.
Good. Congratulations. And thank you for participating once again.
Yes, thank you, Jerry.
Yes, well done. That's surprisingly hard on Zoom.
It's always tempting to read like about seven lines and see how much you can remember, you know? Okay.
Okay, so regarding reorganization, Mr. McGowan is on our reorganization committee. I believe he has a report and then we could do nominations.
Well, I do have a report. And that was the view consensus of the nominee committee that Louise Wilson and Timothy Quinn be appointed as Chair and Vice Chair of the Planning Board for the year 2023. Not to say anymore?
I don't think so. Do we have a nomination? Do we have anyone to make that motion?
I move that Louise is the Chair and Tim is the Vice Chair.
Second?
I second the motion.
I think, do we need to ask if there are any other nominations?
Yeah, we should.
Typically, that's.
Yep.
Yeah, we especially have to do that today in light of what's going on in Washington, don't we? In the spirit of Americana.
Can't, if we can't resolve this by the 11th vote, I don't know.
Yeah, we need ten ballots at least.
Are there any other nominations for Chair or Vice Chair? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you, Madam Chair. The floor is yours.
Well, thank you, everybody. It really is such a privilege and I look forward to another interesting and productive year punctuated by occasional moments of levity. I can hope. So let's see, let's go straight to minutes. Unless Mr. Quinn wants to make a speech.
There are other resolutions that we have to go over prior to that, meeting dates and stuff.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, yeah. We have the, excuse me, item 5.2 is appointment of Planning Board Attorney. Do we need to make a motion on this or is this a more of a consent agenda type of thing?
It's a consent agenda.
I move items two through four, including 4A and 4B.
With the appointment of Planning Board Attorney being Gerald Muller Esquire.
Correct. And the appointment of Secretary being Carrie Phillips. And our meeting calendar, which as always is subject to change.
Yes, and it was, that resolution was circulated before, I mean sometime last week or the week before with those dates.
And also the special meeting notice, so.
Pushing us for clarity, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Do we have a second to that motion?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Quinn, seconded by Mr. Bodigheimer. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Okay, thank you. Now we have minutes from June 2nd, 2022. This was a regular meeting. Any questions or comments or suggested edits? And if not, would someone like to move them?
I move that we accept the minutes.
Thanks, Mr. Taylor. Moved by Jack Taylor, seconded by Mr. Quinn. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Okay. Next, we have findings of fact, a resolution about Nassau 195 LLC. This was a preliminary and finer, final major site plan with variances. 195 Nassau Street, 911, 9-11 Charlton Street and 13 Charlton Street Block 47.01, lots 23, 26, and 27. File number P 2222-232P. Anything you want to call to our attention in this, in these findings of fact, Jerry?
Hopefully, it's all self-explanatory. Obviously, it'll answer any questions. But I do want to make two minor corrections. On page two, it's the fourth, the third, on my pagination, it's the top paragraph. It's the third paragraph of Section 1 where it says toward the end and next to last sentence, "An existing driveway easement permits access to the adjacent lot" that comma should come out, 24, which change are to is, just those two little things.
Okay, good. If there aren't any other questions or comments, would someone like to move this resolution?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. McGowan, seconded by Mr. Chow. Carrie, would you call the roll, please?
Certainly. Sorry. Mr. Chow?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Great. Next up, we have a hearing for an application. This is Honeybrook Estates LLC. This is a minor subdivision at 225 Mountain Avenue Block 6704 Lot 1. This is file number P 2222-286MS.
And Madam Chair, Carrie advises me the proof of publication and service are in order. The board therefore has jurisdiction.
Great, thank you.
Madam Chair, may I ask just one question before we start? We had a process where certain applications, if they were minor, went through a separate committee. And I'm still trying to make sure I got it right. I'm just wondering why it didn't go through that process? And this, is there a variance here?
No, it's because that's the site plan committee and that's the site plans. This is a subdivision. And we used to have a subdivision committee at one time and there was so much flack from all the neighbors that invariably the decision of the subdivision committee would be appealed anyway to the Planning Board. So we just decided to go, have it go straight to eliminate the subdivision committee.
Okay.
Really good question, though. Thanks for raising it. It's important to remind ourselves of that distinction. Okay, Mr. Dobremilsky, do you want to set the table before we turn to the applicants? Jerry, you want to swear in Dan Dobremilsky?
Do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give the truth?
I do.
So I'll swear on it for him.
Dan Dobremilsky, landscape architect and acting planner for this application. Good evening. Thank you. Happy New Year to everyone. So this application, I'm going to try and share my screen. Can you see that?
Yep, yes.
So this is the subdivision application sheet from the plan set. So this, this is an application for minor subdivision of the 4.99 acre single-family residential property at 225 Mountain Avenue, which is the center of the screen here. The applicant has proposed to create a new one and a half acre building lot over in, on the left side of that H circle there, which will be new lot 1.01, while retaining the existing 7,860 square foot dwelling on a 3.43 acre new lot, which will be lot 1.02. While both lots will have frontage upon Mountain Avenue, is proposed that a new drive will be constructed from the Glenn Drive Loop to serve the new structure to be built on the new lot. The new lot will be fully conforming in terms of zoning area and setback standards. The zoning tables provided in the application and in the land use engineer and zoning officer's report. The present 4.99 acre lot was subdivided from a larger parcel in 1980, which preserved the existing state and dwelling as well as the outdoor improvements associated with that dwelling, pool, gardens, and tennis court. Tennis court is located right here in an appropriate setting. Those words are actually right out of the subdivision minutes. The larger divided parcel was then further subdivided via cluster design to create 24 single-family lots and an open space lot for development of the, of the subdivision originally known as design interface. That's the lots here surrounding this parcel. This was in 1981 or 83. That's known as Glenn Drive. And it also included a stormwater management basin, which is located behind the homes to the top of your screen. The new streets, that's Glenn Drive, Kimberly Court, Florence Lane, James Court, do not have sidewalks, but a new path was constructed along Mountain Avenue, which is not shown on this drawing. The existing tennis court with this proposed subdivision will be annexed to the new lot. So this is the subdivision line that they're proposing that I'm tracing now with my cursor. The plans conceptually depict a 3,608 square foot footprint for the new dwelling, 44 by 82 feet. The conceptual footprint is similar dimension to the neighboring homes off Glenn Drive. As you can see graphically, some of the homes that are shown are kind of the same size in terms of footprint. The zone table indicates that the new dwelling, drive, and appurtenances would occupy approximately 6,251 square feet of impervious surface and remain within the 19.5% maximum impervious coverage. And that would be including retaining the tennis court while they're doing that. In terms of florey ratio, the florey ratio is 12.5%. In theory, a dwelling consisting of 8,167 square feet, which would be about two and a quarter times the size of this footprint, that could be constructed on this property. That footprint to build that would be about 500 square feet larger than the footprint they're showing. It's not clear if that tennis court would have to be removed in order to do that or not. It seems like it may not, but it's possible that it would be. That would be on lot 101. There's a typo in my report that says that's lot 102 at the end of the third paragraph. That should be lot 0.102, 1.1, 1.02. So the board may wish to contemplate what a larger prop house on this property could look like if they removed the tennis court and they built a larger house being 100, 8,167 square feet. And the impact that may have on the removal of the tennis court and worse, significant tree clearing to determine if there's any conditions that we want to place upon this subdivision or if they want to allow them to build by right, whatever size is permitted under the zoning.
Dan, the conditions you alluded to, you're talking about it, would one of them be simply limiting the size of the square footage of the house?
It could be that. It could be saying that the, I don't know how you do this, but saying that you want to see the tennis court retained or something like that. I mean, I'm not sure what is critical for this property. I know the Historic Preservation Report did indicate that the tennis court was not of significance. I believe, I'm not going to put words in the mouth, but I believe it did say that. And so it's really, you know, what, what do you feel retains the character of the neighborhood? Is there anything that's critical? And do you want to pose a condition in there that tries to address that? Or do you feel that that's not an issue? I can, let me see if I can switch here. Did that work? So this is an aerial photo of the, of the spot showing you what it looks like. So what you'll see is a lot of trees in this area and some bamboo. This is the tennis court. If you can see my cursor, this is the existing house. This is the location where the new house is shown. And I can quickly go to street view. And that's kind of what it looks like. Everybody can see that this is the corner there. And so as you can imagine, there would be a house constructed in this open field as they conceptually showed at this point, the tennis court is located behind this evergreen trees to the left. This is the path along mountain and the line of cherry trees that I mentioned in my report. So the plans have indicated that the existing trees will remain. It's their proposal to try and keep their existing trees. The bamboo that occurs amongst some evergreen trees in the center here, they indicated they would try to remove that. That would kind of create a backyard for the property, for the new home. And it seems likely to me that a few of the existing trees may end up being lost when you put in grading of the property. As you can see, there's some slope to it. But it seems possible to preserve the majority of the trees. I did note that the, their proposed water and I believe gas connection would be from mountain. And this line of cherry trees is pretty tight. So I'm not sure if there should be a condition indicating that there should be a review of where those lines go relative to the trees in order to preserve those or not. So it's another possible point to contemplate as you discuss this and review this application. There are no, as I indicate, there's no sidewalks existing on Glenn Drive and they're not proposing to add any. And as I indicated, the Land Use Engineering Zoning Officer Report also include information about the proposed right-of-way dedication along mountain, which have been requested. There is a requirement that they would need to remove. Well, sorry, here we go. From the existing house, there's a few, like a fence and gate structure in the side yard that would need to be removed to retain the setback conformity. And that's mentioned in the Land Use Engineering Zoning Officer's report. And as was indicated, there has been a report submitted by the Historic Preservation Office. So hopefully that is sufficient. If there's any questions, I'm glad to answer.
So again, your paragraph number two. What we, what you're suggesting is the board consider a condition that requires plot, a plot plan submission and review. Would that be at the time of compliance? When, when would that be? At the time of compliance, at the time building permits are applied for? When, when would you suggest that?
Typically, that would occur at the time the construction permit is applied for, that they'd have to submit a plot plan. And then there would be a staff level review to assure compliance with any conditions that the board may impose with the approval of the subdivision if that were to occur.
Now, I know in some towns, these kind of plot plans are required at the time of construction permits. And the staff has given a little more discretion than you just described, where if they think, you know, maybe not, not major changes, but, you know, kind of tweaking, that they would have the authority to require that. What's your thought on that?
Yeah, I mean, that being, that's obviously not knowing how they're going to, they could sell this lot, presumably, and whoever purchased it may have different ideas on how to develop it. And that could be positive or negative. And having some leadway to, you know, review that with an understanding of what the sensitivities are in the area at the staff level would be very helpful and make it less cumbersome for an applicant to deal with that, not having to come back to the full board unless it was something significant. So the level that that type of discretion is, the board's comfortable with that, that makes sense.
Okay, and with respect to the condition that you suggested the board might consider in paragraph one, you said there are a couple of different options. Do we have any sense of the size of the other houses? They all look just from the subdivision, they all look like they're roughly the same size.
Yeah, like this, this 44 by 82 footprint is 3,608 square feet. So if you double that, say it's two stories, which it's not always a perfect doubling, but let's just say we did. That's 7,216 square feet if it's a two-story dwelling, which is about 900 square feet less than the maximum by FAR. Uh, which is about nine hundred square feet less than the maximum by F A R. So uh, this is not at max, but it's not too far off. As I said, if you take that nine hundred and split it in two. You're talking about an additional four or five hundred square foot of footprint. Well, so that's not really significant. It would that at that point, it would probably be larger than the other homes. But uh I wouldn't say it's enormously larger. Obviously, it's much smaller than than what's going on on the lot one oh two.
And does that change, Dan, if they get if they get rid of the tennis court?
It it does not, because that's the F A R we're talking about, the floor area ratio. So they met the my point with that was, I'm not sure they could build that size. And still meet the nineteen point five percent M I C maximum impervious coverage. Unless they've removed the tennis court. It's it's close. They might be able to do it. It really comes down to. Uh, you know, how much coverage occurs with any driveway and other elements that are pervious. Um, or impervious, excuse me, uh relative to that. So. That's where the lead way that you were kind of talking about, Jerry, comes into play is what? What what's everybody comfortable with and um there there's no requirement for stormwater here, I believe, because of the size. Um, and there is an existing stormwater basin, management basin, as we indicated, really related to uh the subdivision. But um. So I I guess that's that's the the. The variables that you kind of kind of have to contemplate is. Do you are you comfortable with this size or slightly larger? Or would you prefer to keep it this size and no bigger? Um, if they did increase it a bit, it's probably a few more trees would have to be removed. It's my guess. Um, so that's kind of some of the criteria. I mean, they they have placed it, as you can see, it's a little bit closer to Mountain Avenue than some of the other houses here. That's probably about the same as some of the ones across the street. Um, if they move it back from Mountain Avenue, you're going to lose that, some of those evergreen trees that you saw that were hiding the tennis court from mountain. Um, so that's, there's a lot of variables, like you said, so. To the degree, if there's any sensitivity to the size of the house that's built here, uh that's where you should really contemplate any conditions.
Mister Boddenheimer has been waiting patiently.
Thank you, uh, Madam Shaw. Um, I I could someone just refresh. What our authority is to impose conditions for this kind of sub subdivision if the subdivided. Lot is conforming in all these other respects. And can I also ask? What? Limits there are on our ability to impose those conditions and how that relates to other properties in the surrounding area. Um, you know, I I I can't imagine that we have the latitude to impose conditions that would. Make this property substantially different from the surrounding properties in terms of what can be developed on on it. And I so I just, I I don't really know. That's what right do we have to 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 put conditions on and what's the limit on what conditions we can put on it? A third, I guess, third question, I'm sorry to load up on questions, but. What happens when, uh, you know, the? With the conditions that we put on it. Are we creating the conditions for the eventual developer of the property to come back, you know, to 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 do this by right and and not come back to us? Or are they likely to come back to us? And is it possible that they would come back to us, depending on the conditions we set, and say, we need a variance because. Our property is now like all the other ones in our neighborhood, but. Burdened. Sorry, that's all, that's a whole basket of questions, but.
Yeah, they they wouldn't even need a variance. Uh, let's. Starting with the first question, can we impose conditions? Um, the ability of a planning board or a zoning board to impose conditions is particularly expansive when you have variances, and we've talked about that previously. Um, but that said, I think the board still has the power to impose conditions to to assure that that uh. The 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 new subdivision um. As developed will be consistent with the character of the neighborhood. Doesn't have to be the exact si- same size.
Okay.
Okay, so it did basically the test is always a reasonfulness test, but I think the board would have the power to do that. Um, and that, so so the the answer to your second question, it's a, it's a bit amorphous, but. It 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 always is because ultimately it's always a reasonable in this test. Um, but I think I think the board can do can do that. But as I say, if if the board did it, and then they came back and they said, you know. Um, for reasons X, Y, and Z, we we really uh want this condition modified.
So is the subdivision? Is the subdivision, is the subdivision this particular subdivision or the subdivision? The character of the subdivision that was created in nineteen eighty one?
That would be this.
I'm sorry?
I believe it would be this one, right, Jerry?
Yeah, but it does relate to the character of the subdivision that was created in in eighty one.
That is the neighborhood, you're right.
Yeah, you don't want something wildly uh out of character with it. Uh, I think that would be a uh.
Well.
Malfeasance by the board.
Okay, the other thing is, is if if something that they propose required a variance, they'd be back to the board because they're not proposing. Variance at this point.
Right.
But but the standard that we're. The standard that we're operating under is conditions that would be necessary in our view to impose. In order to maintain. Consistency with the character of the north side of Mountain Avenue. As established in nineteen eighty one, when it was subdivided originally, more or less.
Yeah, and as Dan indicated, to the footprint they're showing on the uh subdivision plan, it's actually bigger than the other. Um, than the other buildings, but at least as I understood what Dan was saying, um, he didn't think that was a tremendously significant uh uh difference. Dan, is that fair to say?
Yes, I I agree. I mean, it's 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 slightly larger. I mean, it is just shown as a footprint. And that footprint does include a three car garage in there from what they've stated. Um, so uh, but it is slightly larger, but the lot's also larger. And there's lots were part of a cluster, so the lots are smaller.
Yes.
Uh, this lot is is a little bit larger. So it's it's kind of, there's a lot of variables there, as I said, and the board can weigh all that and see what you feel comfortable with. Um, whether you feel it would be appropriate to impose any conditions or not.
Uh huh, right.
Mister Taylor, I saw your hand up.
Yeah. I was fascinated by your memo, Miss Kim. I thought, first of all, in the subject matter, what jumped off the page was an unusual. Choice of words, a suggested historic site or district. First of all, I I I'm not clear in my own mind what a suggested historic site or district. Means as a practical matter in the context of the the issues we're discussing. That's the first question. And secondly. You seem to have. Conditions or suggestions for our consideration. And in the spirit of what a suggested historic dis- site means. Could you take us through, say, one, two, and three in particular?
Jack, um, just two things. I mean, certainly, certainly, if if um Louise thinks it's appropriate for for Elizabeth to answer now, that's perfectly appropriate. But I know she and and um Elizabeth had had a colloquy uh at the beginning before the meeting even started about. Going through her report, and maybe it would be best afferring those questions and the answers to them after she goes through the report.
Fine.
Yeah, she's definitely got to go through the report and and I guess, Jerry, I want to turn to you and ask if um. In your view, it makes sense to do that before we hear from the applicant or in in response to um. We just also say sort of as an aside, um, I know we have uh one attendee um. Uh, Mister Richmond, who's had his hand up for some time, and I just want to. Tell you, Mister Richmond, we'll take um questions and comments from the public after the applicant has had an opportunity to present. Um, and um. So we'll take you first, but but not, and you know, not for for a while now. Um, but back to the question of whether Elizabeth Kim um should go over her report now or. Uh, or wait until after. Mister Schatzman and the applicant uh make part of their presentation. What are you? It seems to me like now is a good time.
I I I always like our professionals to give their reports.
Okay, okay, good, great. Um, Ms. Kim, are you uh? Well, go right ahead.
Here, do you want to swear my name?
Yes, yeah, if you could raise your right hand, you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth.
I do.
Just one or a front.
Um, so first to address um Mister Taylor's question, and this is actually the beginning of the report. It is identified this property at two two five Mountain Avenue as a suggested historic cited district. And that is identified in the um historic preservation element of the Princeton Community Master Plan. So right now, there are twenty one designated historic districts in Princeton. This is not one of them. There is a whole um, there, there's a slew of. Properties, um districts that are identified originally um. Uh, when when the uh Princeton Master Plan came together, obviously, it was the borough and the township that the borough had their own list. And the township had their own list. So obviously, this property was in the former township. And one of the criteria for it being considered uh suggested historic district, these are districts. That was felt to be um significant and worthy of being a a a designated district. However. It did not go through the formality of going to, and as you know, like Prospect Avenue. Through the formality of going to the planning board and the council and um going through uh the public hearing and things like that. It just didn't go through um all of that um sequence that's required. But they were identified and placed within the master plan. And according to the M L U L, that if it is um identified in the master plan. That um there is an opportunity for the historic preservation commission to do what's considered a courtesy review. For the Board of Jurisdiction, which is the planning board in this case. Um, so with that, um, this property was originally owned by Doctor A T McGill. In eighteen seventy five, who also owned, as we know, at Coventry Farms. So Doctor McGill moved a house from Alexander Street to the site. Which was uh likely used for the tenant farmers. The land at that time was also referred to as a lone tree farm because of the deforestation appearance of the property. Uh, the property was later purchased uh for um by a wealthy uh Philadelphian for his summer enjoyment. Um, and um. Who was named Alexander Benson and his brother Lawrence bought Coventry Farms. And in eighteen nineteen, the house was designed by Herbert E. Reeves. And was built and incorporated the house from Alexander um road. Into the house that we see today. There were also alterations in nineteen twenty three that were designed by Ralph Baum, which. I'm sure many of the members know, very prominent architect who did a lot of work in Princeton. Um. Reference to this project is a nineteen eighty one architectural survey where much of this information came from. And during that time um of the um inventory, um it stated that the mantles, doors and wood trim of the rich. Original Alexander Street structure and other architectural features were preserved in the house. And all the trees that were surrounding the property were planted by by Benson. Um, the existing house is designed in the colonial revival style. It's two and a half stories and it's an L shape. It has a stone and brick foundation and the exterior walls are stucco over hollow tile and brick veneer. In nineteen eighty one, the property also contained a hollow tile garage with an apartment above it and an old barn. Obviously, these no longer are contained on the property. Um, as mentioned by um Mister Dover Melsky, the property contains four point nine nine acres. And it's situated internal to the whole horseshoe of um of the Glen Drive. The house is set back about two hundred fifty feet from Mountain Avenue. And there is a tennis court that is found off the west side of the house and a paved driveway. From the east and the Glen Drive that sweeps to the parking area on the north side of the house. Their formal fountain areas, patios and pools that were developed off the north and south side of this house. And um, as you know, the applicant proposed to subdivide the single lot into two new lots. And um, the um, the new lot line will be created approximately twenty feet west of the existing historic house. And um, develop new lot one oh, one point oh one, which contains existing tennis court and develop the land for a new house. And new lot one point oh two will contain the historic house driveway and remaining exterior site features such as the fountains and patios. Um. The minor site plan subdivision proposed condition indicates a potential house that's forty four feet by eighty two feet. With a side access driveway built on new lot one point oh one. And they also indicate that the bamboo on the pro- property is proposed to be removed. Uh, the existing site is uh heavily screened with vegetation from Mountain Avenue and.
Yes.
I I I'm just curious about the 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 length of this report and the the extent to which. We might be able to uh request the elements of this report that focus specifically on the question that. That Jack Taylor asked, which is sort of, I think, the the basis of the. Suggested historic designation as opposed to the other parts of this report, which I think are maybe duplicative of some of the other materials we've heard so far.
Well, we, yeah, we did ask Ms. Kim to go over her her whole report, but um. Uh, but I I. I I understand what you're getting at, and um. I think, Elizabeth, you're mostly done with with the meat of the report before you get to the recommendations, right?
I'm actually ready to then, yeah.
Great, let's let's do that segue.
Um, the H P C Minister of Review with myself and the H P C Chair, we had no objections to the subdivision. However, we did make six recommendations, which are the ones that we're going to go over now. So one is um. If the board would consider appropriate to request a front yard setback from Mountain Avenue for the new house to be set. At the prevailing setback to the other houses within this development that have frontage along Mountain Avenue. So uh, the township um ordinance reads or the former township ordinance reads that. Um, a corner lot has two frontages versus a borough that actually does one. Uh, the second comment is the size, the new house should not shadow the presence of the historic house and should be respectful in its sighting. On the site and proximity to the historic house. Uh, the third recommendation is a condition being imposed on new lot one point oh one. Requiring the new building footprint height and house square footage to be consistent with those within the development to integrate with that development. And number four is existing trees that run close to the new property line should be retained, assuming they're in favorable condition. And the evergreen trees also along Glen Drive should be preserved as well, if also in good condition. Um, number five is if the new property owner of lot one point oh one wishes to remove the existing tennis court. H P C would have no objection. And the last one is that we concur that the removal of invasive bamboo species on the property should be removed. Thank you. I'm available for any comments the board may have.
Thanks, Ms. Kim. When you say shall not shadow, do you mean shall not cast a shadow on the? On the existing house or shall not look like it, or what does that mean?
Should not shadow meaning like overwhelming, you know, should not. Um, should not take the significance of the historic structure. By making it so much larger and also not integrating well within the the development.
Okay, all right, that's helpful, thanks. Uh, Mister Quinn. You're muted still.
Oh.
There you go.
Oh, thank you. Oh, I I think I'm unmuted now. I. Elizabeth, I think it might be helpful for my colleague, Mister Taylor, to point out that. There are historic districts in Princeton that are a single structure. Historic districts and out of the twenty one, would you happen to know how many are? Involved sort of one house or one site. At a ballpark estimate is. I just want to give it, we use the word district, which makes it sound like it's a large tract. When it can just be a single tract of land, correct?
Right, yeah, it could be a district or a site. For example, Tuscaloosa on Cherry Hill Road is one property.
And it's a, it's considered a historic district, though.
It's called historic district, although it is just an historic site.
Okay, thank you.
And is this suggested district this one lot or is it a stretch of mountain?
It's just this one person.
Okay.
So if I understand your your point, what you're basically arguing.
So if I understand your, your point, what you're basically arguing is that. While the house itself and the three point four five acres clearly should be preserved, clearly have a historic. Definition. It doesn't impact the historic nature of that three point four five acres to add additional housing. On the four point nine nine. In other words, I could see an argument that gee, maybe we should be preserving the whole four point nine nine. I don't say that because I'm arguing in that sense, but perhaps the four point nine nine is the historic district truly. And you're basically arguing that that's not the case, that there is nothing inconsistent with another house. Provided the house is, what's the word, consistent with or doesn't impact negatively. The historic character, its, its appearance in Princeton.
Uh, yes, the chair myself um, felt that to subdivide the parcel. And to preserve the vegetation that actually screens the historic house. Um, and to build a new lot onto that parcel that would be subdivided. Would not greatly impact the historic significance of that property.
When you looked at the four point nine nine acres, what was your impression of the one lot one oh two on the other side? Are we, are we facing any risk or possibility? That that lot two might well be one day subdivided and developed? So that we would have two houses? And not one?
There's always a possibility that the property owner in the future themselves or. Would sell it and someone would come to the board and ask for another subdivision. I mean, there's always that case.
Yeah.
What, what's the minimum, what's the minimum lot size in, in zone?
Eight and a half.
Eight and a half.
So it's very difficult. You need a variance to subdivide the other.
And Derek, let me just swear. You swear or affirm the testimony you have given and will give will be the truth.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
And in any event, uh, whether or not that could happen at some point in the future is beyond what we can consider this.
That's well taken. Yes, I understand.
Um, but an interesting thought. Uh, Mr. Chow. You, we cannot hear you.
The new lot one point oh two, would it still be under that suggested historical district?
It would.
It would, okay. And therefore, we, you could impose a condition to preserve the trees that. That block the view of uh, with, of the new house from the, the historical house.
Well, again, because it's a suggested district, it, it is um, a recommendation that we are making to your board, that that be retained.
Okay.
Be able to preserve the character of that property that's going to be remaining.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Other quest, uh. You're done, right? Phil, you're, okay. Uh, Mr. Quinn.
Just to be clear, Elizabeth, there's nothing preventing us from approving this subdivision. And having the other lot, the remaining lot with the historic structure. Being designated in the master plan that we're working on now as a future. Considered historic district, correct?
We would like that to be the case, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, other questions for Ms. Kim or for Mr. Dobremilsky? Any other comments uh, from Mr. Bridger, Mr. Weissman, before we turn to the applicant? I'm not seeing anybody unmute themselves, so. Uh, I, I'm particularly interested in what they have to say about the, the two frontages. Um, but I won't um, you know, pepper anybody with questions about that until after um, the applicant has had a chance to. Present their ideas and their plans, so um. With that, I guess I would invite Mr. Schatzman uh, to unmute yourself and start us off for your clients.
Yes, Richard Schatzman, attorney for the applicant. Uh, Happy New Year to everybody and um. We, as to the presentation by Mr. Dobremilsky. Uh, first of all, there has to be a stormwater management system at the time of the uh. Uh, plot plan to be uh, uh, reviewed by Mr. Purcell. Because of the uh, new stormwater regs, so he's wrong on that. But um, as far as the uh, Weissman Bridger report. The existing gate walkway and patios within the side yard setback of both lots one point oh one and one point oh two shall be removed. As a condition of approval, we agree to that. The zoning table has to be changed. That's staff comments one and two on page two. And uh. We will show the uh. Bike path easement, other revised plans.
What page are you on, Rich?
What?
What page are you on?
I'm on page three. And um. The page. Of five, all of those, um. One, two, three, four, five, and six, we agree to, no problems, they're normal. And we agree to that. Um, now. And the presentation made by your professionals, as far as facts. Except what I'm going to say later. Tell what it is as far as the application is concerned. Uh, again, without beating uh, that horse, this uh, subdivision. Uh, complies in all respects with the R two zone. The house will comply with. The, all the bulk requirements of the RT zone, including the SAR and the purvis coverage. And as far as Mr. Dobremilsky, who basically repeated this. Bridger and Mr. Weissman's report.
Uh, I'm sorry to interrupt, um, Mr. Schatz, Schatzman, but when you turn your head to the side, we can no longer hear.
All right, I'm sorry.
That's all, all right, we've only missed a few words, but I.
So, so, so you heard that, but as far as Mr. Dumbrumilsky's report. And Mr. Uh, and this is from Mr. Mueller, basically. I'm going to read you a portion from um, the Cox book. Uh, which is the Bible on land use. And um. They discuss on page five oh six, section twenty-four point oh two. The famous case of Pizzo Madden versus the Township of Randolph. And the court held that planning boards do not have the authority to deny an application for subdivision approval. Based upon considerations of general welfare, the purpose of the municipal land use law sound planning. Rather, a planning board must approve a subdivision. Unless it fails to comport with requirements that are specifically delineated. In the duly enacted subdivision or zoning ordinances, item that two two six. Then it goes to say, compare El Shire versus Planning Board, two forty-nine NJ Super, three twenty-three active. Nineteen ninety-one cert denied one twenty-seven NJ five forty-six nineteen ninety-two. Which could be interpreted to mean that the planning board in its review of a subdivision. May consider the general purposes of zoning. And the public welfare independently of the standards enumerated in the subdivision ordinance. Pizzo one thirty-seven and two twenty-seven discussing El Shire. In Pizzo. The Supreme Court disapproved such a reading of El Shire. And held that it's up to governing bodies to consider the general purposes of zoning. And then the public welfare in drafting the ordinances which in turn guide the planning boards. I'm going to omit the citations. So I disagree respectfully with Mr. Mueller as far as conditions. Because as far as I'm concerned, since there are no variances. And since there are no design waivers that we're going to ask for, or we tend to ask for. Then uh, as far as I'm concerned, we have a right to develop this property. In accordance with the R two zone. Without regarding what you think is part of the public welfare. When you have an applicant coming before, whether it be a zoning board or a planning board. The applicant must know what the applicant is in for. And that case is uh, Hilton Acres versus Klein, that's an older case. But there has to be specifically in the zoning ordinance, what we have to comply with. Business about putting conditions well has to comply with the neighborhood. That's so, there's a case called Bell Meyer versus Lacy by Judge Serpantelli in Ocean County. That says you can do that if there are C two variances because in that case, there has to be a. Uh, there has to be a proof by the applicant in the C two or C one variances. Uh, for, for lack of a better name, with, if I remember the case correctly. That you have to prove that the uh, lack of the negative criteria. And one of the things that Judge Serpantelli said is that you have to show that the house that you're proposing. In the neighborhood fits in basically with the neighborhood. But here, we don't have to prove the lack of the negative criteria. Again. This house will comply in all respects with the zoning ordinance of the R two zone. And as far as, that's my first legal point. My second legal point is, is that this uh, district is. Uh, suggested district is not a, 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 I'm sorry, historic district. It's not a historic district within the master plan. There's a case called Newburger versus uh, uh, Middletown where Judge. Landau specifically points out that each part of the Enabling Act. Of the municipal land use law, which is forty colon fifty-five D hyphen one ten, has to be complied with. And forty colon fifty-five D hyphen one ten, I respectfully Smith says it's got to be part of the. Master plan, not a suggested part. But also, it can be of the zoning ordinance, which it is not. And has to be uh, in accordance with the official map. Now I've read your, your master plan. I both, I read the uh, one adopted on six seven twelve and the two thousand seventeen reexamination report. And that, those reports talk about at some point in time, we're going to make it historic. And I asked Eric Bridger uh, to confirm that, and he referred it to Ms. Kim. And Ms. Kim said, no, it's, it's suggested, it's not officially. So where'd you use, and you can correct me, Ms. Kim, that it's not a historic district. They'd like it to be, they would, you'd like in your master plan, especially in your two hundred and seventeen. Reexamination report, you talk about a lot of things you want to do. But unless they're putting in the ordinance and unless they're putting definitively in a master plan. And under the Newburger case, we're not in the historic district. So we, we can, a lot of things that Ms. Kim's uh, factually uh, says. We could comply with by putting the house where we put the house. We do not overshadow the Knox House, which is the historic house. By doing that, where we do put it, it's less grading, there's no grading, and so we wouldn't have to uh. Do more grading, which is contrary to the environment. The trees will be saved uh, by putting it where it is. And, and she's right, there's two front yards, but the house is. Uh, the front yard, the real, what I call the real front yard is on, is on um. Glen Drive, not on Mountain View. Now, if we move the house back from Mountain View. Uh, mountain, mountain, rather. Uh, we would uh, probably need some variances because of the shape of the lot. That was created in nineteen eighty. When the original subdivision was, was created. So, we, we, we wouldn't want to do that. And by putting the house where we do put the house, we save the trees. And if there were uh, any trees that uh, would be uh, knocked down, we don't anticipate it. Uh, we would uh, have to replace it in accordance with the ordinance, replace the trees. But most of the cherry trees and the other trees between the Knox House and the uh. And this, the proposed house to be built will be saved if you put the house where it is, not pushing it back. Pushing it back toward, away from Mountain Avenue doesn't do anything for anybody. Oh, probably will. Uh, as Mr. Posky says, will probably ruin some of the trees in the back there. And, and by doing that, it'll take away your backyard. So, but you have to realize also, and my firm, uh, nineteen eighty did the, the design interface. Uh, job uh, for Bobby Hillier Design Interface. Those lots are ten thousand square feet. It's, it's a cluster. So to say that we have to have a house that, that matches a house on ten thousand square feet. Where we have one and a half acres, which is the minimum zone of the R two zone, would be. Would, would just be unreasonable arbitrary and as they say in the law of capricious. So factually, that's, that's not uh, doable. And again, that doesn't take away from the fact that I don't believe under the Newburger case. And the fact that your master plan does not have this as an official historic district. Give the historic district uh, the right to uh, impose conditions. Uh, again, factually, some of the conditions that she suggests, assuming we were in the historic district, will be taken care of. I.e. the house will be located so that it, the trees are preserved between the Knox House and the uh. Uh, this house, the trees along uh, Mountain Avenue will be preserved. And the grading will be lessened by putting the house here. And the house really has the frontage uh, and the front yard really on Glen Drive, not on Mountain Avenue. And so those are the legal arguments that uh, I'm making in, in um. The two uh, uh, memos of Ms. Kim and uh. The uh, the uh. Mr. Dobremilsky, who's the landscape architect.
And planner.
And planner, I'm sorry.
Um, Ms. Kim, you've had your hand up?
Yes, thank you. Um, Mr. Schatzman, I appreciate your um, interpretation of that section of the MLUL. But I have to say, I do disagree with the way you interpret it. I mean, this has come up often with other properties. That are in the suggested district and um. My understanding is that if it is mentioned in the master plan, it does not say it has to be a designated historic district. But if it's mentioned within there, that there is an opportunity for the historic preservation commission to review it. And again, it is a suggested district. And what that entails is if it was a historic district, the applicant would have to fill out a historic preservation application. In addition to fees, which is not required, but it's considered a courtesy review in which the HPC reviews for the Board of Jurisdiction.
Um, I, if you didn't read the uh, uh, Newburger case. Um, did you read the Newburger versus um, uh, Middletown Township case by Judge Glendow?
I did not.
Okay.
So um, Mr. Schatzman, I, I appreciate your cards on the table approach here. I, I, are, are you signaling that your, that your client will not? Accept any conditions or are you simply stating the case law a, as it exists and is documented in Cox and uh, and. Have, have some more folks to speak to the application and then we can talk.
Uh, that's, that's correct, Ms. Wilson. We uh, we feel that the R two zone is the R two zone. We will comply with every part of the R two zone without conditions. And um, basing it on the uh. And um basing it on the uh, the case is the Pizzle Mountain case. Um, basing as far as the historic district is concerned on the Newburger case. Uh, you are a quasi judicial board. And I'm sure I don't have to lecture this board about what a quasi judicial board is. A quasi judicial board has to follow the statute and the case law that interprets it. So that's why I'm saying.
You don't have to, but you will anyway, huh?
What's that? What's that?
Never mind, it was a throwaway comment.
If I may.
I mean, so, I mean, I mean, I'm a lawyer and Mr. Mr. uh Mueller uh is a lawyer and, you know.
Mr. McGowan's a lawyer too.
Lawyers and you were lucky if you can agree that today is January uh fifth. Or what, or, you know, what can I tell you? But I mean, that's the way I read it. And I read the cases. I read the historic preservation element. I do say some of the things the uh, the the master plan and the rear valuation talks about also. You make the, you you make a lament about the fact that there's no really lack of open land to build houses anymore in Princeton. Mostly, of course, for a modern income and for low income housing. But you also use the word all uh types of housing. And you lament the fact that people now are doing what they call knockdowns, destroying old houses and putting up uh uh new houses. Uh, so here's a piece of property that's open space land that a house can be built without knocking down another house. And uh the R two zone is the R two zone. Quite frankly, if you don't like what the R two zone is, then you ought to change it to make it more limiting and have the um, have the right therefore to have uh design standards, if you want. But you just can't pop it on an applicant that comes before the board now for a minor subdivision, and you all agree it's a minor subdivision, and then say, well, we're going to impose conditions anyhow because, you know, we don't like the way the R two zone is. The houses are too big. Or we, or the, or the, or should have a uh a a prevailing setback on Mountain Avenue, doesn't have any of that. So what you're doing is you're imposing conditions that should be in the ordinance. And but it's too late for that now for this application, that's all I'm saying.
Mm-hmm, okay. Uh, Mr. Quinn?
Can we hear from Mr. Mueller? I think he's been trying to get a word in edgewise.
Yeah.
Um, go ahead, Jerry.
Yeah, I agree with Mr. Schatzman that Pizzle Manten does stand for the proposition that you can't deny an application just because you think it's bad zoning. But I think it's a big jump from that to say you can't impose conditions. And let me read the leading case on, in pertinent language, in a leading case on conditions, which is called, or it's by Judge Serpantelli also, it's called Orlosky versus Shipbottom Planning Board. To be valid, conditions must, one, not offend against any provision of the zoning ordinance; two, not require illegal conduct on the part of the permittee; three, be in the public interest; four, be reasonably calculated to achieve some legitimate objective of the zoning ordinance; and five, not be unnecessarily burdensome to the landlord owner. So those are the governing uh standards. Uh, and I think um certainly gives a right to to planning boards uh uh to look at conditions that they think uh satisfy these the these criteria.
Orlosky had to do with a uh variance, Jerry.
But this language is is not limited to a variance.
Well, the the facts of Orlosky were variances.
Yeah, I understand.
So I don't think it's a big jump. It's one thing to impose conditions, and I'll agree with you, you to to mollify the negative criteria on a variance where, on a subdivision or any variance application or a site plan with a variance application, you can impose conditions, but uh, again, I'm quoting from Cox, rather, a planning board must approve the subdivision unless it fails to support with requirements that are specifically delineated in the duly enacted subdivision or zoning ordinance.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Yeah, I know, but that's not the issue.
So let no, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, no, go on, I mean, but it's one thing for a variance, not even for a design waiver, but it's another thing when you have conforming subdivision. Again, an applicant under Hilton Acres versus Klein must know what he's getting into. And, you know, you read an ordinance, an applicant comes to a lawyer and says, what can we do? I can say you comply with the R two district. But if you're starting imposing conditions because you you don't like the way the house is, or you think it's too big, or you think it should be further away from Mountain View, Mountain Avenue, um, you know, that's not fair. Put your, put yourself as a practical matter, without going through arguing about Orlosky or Pizzle Manten or Hilton Acres, put yourself in in an applicant's position. I know you're protecting the town, and that's that's part of your job and, you know. But but what's an applicant supposed to do? All of a sudden, you say, well, it's in the R two zone, well, you can't build this house. You can't, you have to be further away from Mountain Avenue, even though the front yard is is complied with. Uh, the side yards are complied with, the rear yard is complied with. Because we, we, this is better for the neighbor, this is better for the general welfare, this is better for the neighborhood. And Pizzle Manten says you can't do that. And and and
His man says you can't deny.
Any planning board or zoning board, the primarily a planning board, the applicant's got to know what he's in for.
Well, uh, Mr. Bodik, I'm sorry, Mr. Mueller, did you?
No, I just maybe we have a different point of view on this.
Yeah. Mr. Bodikheimer?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I I guess at this point, I I sort of feel as a, you know, as a planning board member, that I'm not in a, I'm not in a position to to adjudicate the differences between the applicant and our attorney at this point. I think it's clear that there's a difference in interpretation. Uh, I'm just wondering if there's additional substance that the applicant wants to present before we move on to the hearing? Um, or whether we should just go ahead and and uh and listen, you know, hear what the public has to say and see whether some of these questions are moot, depending on
Yeah.
whether or not there's an appetite to impose any conditions or not. Uh, I don't think we need to have a theoretical conversation if there are.
And it's a very good point, and it might might turn out that this is much ado gun nothing.
So, um, Mr. Schatzman, does your client, do you have any um images of what you expect this new dwelling to look like? Um, how it would address both streets or both frontages, if you will? Um, what kind of scale we're talking about as you look at it from the street? Um, I guess I could ask Mr. Bridger, what is, or, uh, maybe it's even in the no, it wouldn't be, oh. All the setbacks are in the memo, but what's the height limit on homes in this? I'm curious about that, that's just sort of a little detail question. But but I I'm, I want to get at what what um the neighborhood and passersby will um see. If if you have a sense of that, the applicant has a sense of that. So Derek, what is the height limit?
It's thirty-five feet.
Thirty-five, okay. Thanks.
Yes, ma'am.
So Richard, do, uh, Mr. Schatzman, do you have um you know, any, any images or mockups or anything of what you, i- is this a subdivision um prerequisite to selling the lot and you have no idea, you know, who might build what there and?
No, we have no idea.
Okay.
We have no idea, but you know, it's a, it's a one and a half acre lot, everything around the the Glen is ten thousand acres, quarters. Right?
Ten thousand square.
Ten thousand square feet. I'm sorry, ten thousand square feet, which is a real estate quarter of an acre. And here you have a piece of property that's huge. Now, you wouldn't want to uh put a, the same type of house as a Glen on a one and a half acre lot. And if you look at south, uh, if you look south on Mount, on Mountain Avenue, the houses are much bigger. And then if you go on the Windfield, the houses are much bigger, so I don't know. You'll have to define what is the neighborhood. You know, is the neighborhood include Windfield, but Norvestein built years ago? That is, the neighborhood also include the houses south of of a Mountain Avenue, which are much bigger? What does it include? I mean, you couldn't, you wouldn't expect it to be the same as a uh a house on the Glen, because that's a cluster, was a cluster done in nineteen eighty.
Rich, you you said your firm handled the cluster. Was there an open space requirement?
The cluster? Yeah, there, yeah, there was. To the back there, it's way in the back by the brook.
Okay. And then you.
Yeah, and my, my firm did the work for Hillier.
If I can pitch something into the conversation.
You got to be sworn in.
Who is this?
Swearman, he's one of the app, he's a member of the applicant.
And professional engineer who participated on the design of this project.
So if you.
Okay, sir, so.
Identify your name and where you.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
That be truth and truth and nothing more than truth. My name is Cyril Kucera. I'm a licensed professional engineer in state of New Jersey.
Could you spell your name, please, sir?
It's a C Y R I L K U C E R A is my last name.
Thank you.
Uh, putting all these law questions to the side, just simple engineering comparison. Twenty-four lots surrounding this particular piece of land were built under cluster development. This cluster development has a certain rules for the development. One of the rule is a ten thousand square feet, the minimum lot area and maximum height of the building thirty-five, thirty feet. Here we are talking about R two zone, which has a one and a half acre minimum area and thirty-five feet m- maximum height of the building. So roughly calculating, we are talking about twelve times bigger lot. Twelve times bigger lot, we are proposing, and those surrounding twenty-four lots around. So it's like comparing some very simple, cheap car with the top-notch Mercedes, so I again, this is just there from engineering point of view, I'm not
It's six, not twelve.
An illegal issue.
As you say, it's six times, not twelve.
It's a ten thousand. Uh, one acre is forty-three thousand five hundred. This is four times into the acre and this is a one and a half acre, I'm sorry, you're right, yeah. You're right, sorry about this.
Sure.
Okay, so are there, Mr. Dobromilsky?
Yeah, I just, I mean, the question that comes to my mind is, so if you're opposed to conditions, then why did you depict the house the way you did? And provide in your application that you're going to save the trees and place the house in the location to preserve the tennis court? If you're not suggesting that you intend to do that? I mean, the setback from Mountain Avenue could be twenty-five, you've shown fifty feet, which makes sense. You've, I, as I indicated, you kind of showed the proposed dwelling in a location on the one and a half acre lot that makes sense. So I think you've showed us that you can build a house that is compatible. Yet you're now saying you don't want to be held to that. And I guess the question is uh, then why show us what you, what you're not intending to do or don't want to be held to be doing?
That's, we're just showing, we're, we're going to build a house that complies with the zoning ordinance, period. This is just a typical house that could be there. The house has to be uh examined uh by the engineering department and by the uh by Mr. Bridger, the zoning officer. But that's, it shows a typical house can be built, be built there. But the zoning ordinance provides for certain faults that we will comply with. Uh, a planning board, a a site plan ordinance under NJSA forty colon fifty-five D hyphen uh twenty-seven uh cannot, site plans for single-family dwellings are not a part, cannot be part of a site plan ordinance. They're done administratively. All I'm saying to you is, we're showing a typical house that can be built there. We're not, we, but the, but my position is, and my client's position legally is that, you know, we'll comply with the R two zone, period. We're not asking for variances. And Mr. Mueller and I disagree as to whether you can put conditions or not. And maybe somebody in Trenton will maybe have to decide that, I don't know. Somebody who wears a black robe.
Well, I I saw that, I mean, you did agree to conditions that were suggested. You went through the conditions that you agreed to.
Yeah, I agree.
But but the image that you showed us and the placement of the house is not something that you're a- agreeing to.
No, I'm agreeing.
Not agreeing to the placement or proportions that are shown in the exhibit that you provided, is that correct?
I'm agreeing to the placement of the house. I'm agreeing that we're going to save the trees between the between uh this lot and the Knox House lot. I'm agreeing that we're going to s- save all the trees uh if possible, of the cherry trees along uh Mountain Road. That's what I'm saying. And I'm saying that by placing the house where we are, we're in fact complying with one of the conditions that Ms. Kim wants, and that is it won't overshadow the Knox House, because it's as far away as you can be. The trees, the trees are, it's going to be lower because of the grading, the trees are going to be there, the trees are going to be there between the two uh houses, the trees are going to be uh kept on uh Mountain Road. So we are complying with with uh, we will comply with those, there's no question about it. We just don't want the dimensions of the house being limited by, you know, conditions that have nothing to do with uh the R two zone.
Okay, so you're agreeing with the setbacks that are shown, but not limits.
I can understand you wanting that, and we understand it too. We want to preserve the trees, we want to pres, we want to put the house as far away from the Knox House as possible, and this is where it goes because of the grading, and it also limits the grading. So we're doing those things uh that that are preserving the uh the Knox House and not overshadowing it and not doing away with the trees. Well, we're, and we'll agree to that. But we're not going to agree to the dimensions of the house, and we want the house to be placed where we show it on the conceptual plan. We want, don't want to move it back. We've, we'll probably look at the tennis court, we'll try to keep the tennis court. And if we move it back, the tennis court's got to go. And if we move it back, we're probably going to need some variances because of the way the shape of the lot, you can see, is curved. So we might have a problem with either side yards or front yards. And I I think Mr. Mueller will agree that you can't make an applicant push a house back so that he, that the house will need variances, both variances for side yards, backyards or front yards.
Right. Yeah, and you've made the point, as has Mr. Dobromilsky, I think, that if you push the house back, then you end up removing more trees, which people don't, you know, want to see. So, okay, thank you for that, that clarification, that was helpful. Are there other board members with questions? For the applicant, and if not, um, I think it's a good time to open the public portion of the meeting and hear from the public. Um, we have right now fourteen members of the public um in attendance, and I think that Ms. Philip just brought over Mr. Richmond, and then next up will be um Tara Gay Oskiper. Uh, Mr. Richmond, if you can unmute yourself and activate your camera, um, Mr. Mueller will swear you in.
Very good.
Do you swear or affirm that testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
Yes, I do.
So it's one affirmed.
Great. Uh, thank you, board.
I'm sorry, ju- just before you start, you'll, you'll have three minutes. I'm sorry, ju- just before you start, you'll, you'll have three minutes and, and will, there will be a a countdown clock up on your screen uh, to help you with your time management.
I, I see that and I appreciate it. You must know me. Thank you very much. And thank you, planning board, and thank you applicants, and I appreciate everything that I'm hearing. My name is Kurt Richmond. I'm a resident of Princeton, twenty-two Florence Lane. I'm also the current president of the Glen Homeowners Association, representing the twenty-four homes and forty-one residents of Glen Drive, Kimberly Court, James Court in Florence Lane. Our community has been part of Princeton for almost forty years, and our homes designed by Robert Hillier surround the two twenty-five Mountain Avenue property. Uh, we, we do have concerns of, about the Honeybrook Estate proposal. Uh, we read through all the documents, the board read through the documents, and many of the residents read through the documents. And, and we, we appreciate the applicant saying about how he's going to stick with the zoning requirements, and maybe he will, and maybe he won't do something different. I, I do understand that. Uh, but we, we are asking for um, uh, just to consider, at least to consider the homes that have been there for almost forty years. And, and one thing that stuck out that was said early on by a few people is when this subdivision was approved in nineteen eighty-one, that the size of the lot for two twenty-five mountain was appropriate for the development. It was appropriate. So now it's not appropriate. That was the one thing that jumped out to me. It was deemed in nineteen eighty-one, nineteen eighty-three to be appropriate. And now, okay, so you've got the zoning on your side. I understand that. I get it. But it was deemed appropriate, and now you're saying it's not. So you, you can do what you like, but you could also work with the community. You can build a monstrosity. You can do what other, other developers have done on Nassau Street and Elm. And you can do what they did with Albemarle and, and you can do a lot, you can do whatever you want to according to zoning, but we're asking you to work with us. So that's the appeal, and I'm, I'm watching the clock closely. That's the appeal. Uh, it's to, to, um, also, I do have to correct uh, Mr. Schatzman because he was incorrect, and I, I am the one that's going to say to him, he was incorrect. They're not ten thousand square foot lots. The smallest lot is twenty-four thousand, the largest is about thirty thousand. There's seventeen acres of open space surrounding fourteen acres of homeowners property. And to correct the engineer, I, I, were we the Mercedes or were we the other? I, I really couldn't tell in your careful hands. But we'll move on from that, too. But I am asking that this, that, that the uh, the uh, planning board consider the neighborhood, which they have done, especially much better than in the past. And I, that's all we're asking. Um, the builder can do whatever he wants to do within the zoning requirements. We're asking that you work with the neighborhood. And the one thing I'll mention in my last twenty seconds is there is a water runoff issue on that side of Glen Drive, one down to Kimberly, that affects the houses in the lower portion of the Glen Homeowners Association that I have not heard addressed and should be addressed. And you know, there's twenty-four homes. I, I think many of our residents are on this call. Um, anyway, thank you very much for your time.
And Mr. Richmond, just quickly, you, you gave the range of the size of, of the, the lots. The largest was twenty-four thousand square feet. What was the smallest?
No, the twenty-four thousand, it's, they go anywhere from point five seven acres, not point two, I think it was said, so not ten thousand square foot lots. It's point five seven acres to up to point seven four, I think, is our largest lot. And then they're surrounded by seventeen acres of open space, common land.
Thank you.
Um, and just to the question of stormwater runoff, Mr. Schatzman pointed out that when um, a house is designed for the lot, they will need to uh, include um, and come to the municipality with the stormwater management plan for that lot that conforms with the new uh, state's stormwater regulations and the local ordinance. Is that correct, Mr. Schatzman? You, I guess I should ask my own people, Mr. Weissman.
Correct. Right now, you don't have any stormwater management at all.
On the site?
On the site.
Yes, yeah.
Nineteen eighty, and there was only quantity then, not even quantity and quality and absorption. Well, the, whoever's built there will have the stormwater management system.
Yeah. Great, okay. And even though it's a development of a single lot, it still has to come to the town for approval of the stormwater management plan?
Yeah, yes, it does.
It doesn't come to the board, but it comes to the town. Okay, that makes perfect.
Mr. Purcell does that.
Right, got it. Okay. Okay, good. Um, Ms. Philip, did you bring over our next speaker? From the public?
I tried to, but uh, he's no, his hand is no longer raised. I don't know if he still wishes to speak. Targay Oskiper.
Yes, his hand went up for a minute and then.
Right, and then it's not that.
Back down again, and now it's up, and now it's down. He may be double clicking. Um, why don't you, why don't you bring that individual over and we'll ask him, him or her? Um.
Right.
If they wish to speak.
Okay.
Hello?
Hi, can you activate your, your camera? Or do you wish to address the board, sir?
Uh, yes, sure.
Okay.
If you could raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that testimony about to give will be the truth?
Yes.
So it's one of them.
Hi, uh, I live in one ninety Mountain Avenue, right across from this property. And since uh, for about six years, I've been here. Um, and when, when we purchased our property, there was a huge lot of land that got subdivided. There was a church there in Westerly, on the Westerly side. Um, and those lots, so my, what I'm going to ask is, uh, it's not maybe a question about the commentary. So, so I mean, we walk around this neighborhood also, we land almost every day, our dog. Very about, um, on our side is the character of the neighborhood. I think this house is going to be, from what I see, much bigger than the again, the engineer also argued the cheapness of it, but they are not cheap. They are very nicely done, the cluster homes out, out there. I would rather see something like that. Otherwise, it's going to stick out like a sore thumb, for sure. And the second thing, so the owner of this house that recently sold in this, this summer, how come he hasn't thought about this um, subdivision all these years, twenty years, I think, they live there? And there's basically free money that, I mean, these lots would go about a million, easily a million dollars the size of the lot. The Westerly side, uh, those lots meant for like eight hundred K uh, almost six years ago. Uh, so there's a lot of, so, uh, how come in the forty years since nineteen eighty, this hasn't been done, and all of a sudden this summer someone buys it and um, comes up with this clever idea? Uh, so that's uh, another concern. Um, basically, yeah, that's, those are my comments.
Um, well, I, I I, I feel I need to say that the, the timing of this um, i- is, is nothing that the board you know, i- is, is irrelevant to our decision-making, uh, not, not to be overly negative about it, but about the comment, but um, if the, if the applicant wants to address, you know, the question of why now, um, they're, they're free to do so, but the fact that it's happening now instead of, you know, ten or twenty years ago is um, is not something that we can really take into account, I don't think, in our decision-making, and Mr. Muller, you can correct me if I'm wrong.
No, that's, that is correct.
So it do, it does not appear to me that the, um, Mr. Bridger, did you have something you wanted to say?
I've spoken to numerous people about this property. It came on the market, I believe the previous owner died and their heirs decided to sell the mark, the property. So, you know, we've had a lot of calls about it. You know, regarding subdivision, what they can do with the property, so. That's the limited bit of history that I have.
That's good to, that's good context. It's good to know. Uh, are there other members of the public who would like to speak? Um, ask questions, express opinions? I'm not seeing any hands go up, so I will close the public portion of the meeting. Um, board members, uh, questions, comments? Ideas? Mr. Mr. McGowan?
Um, comments? Now that I've, I guess I've heard both sides of this, it seems to me, and the way I look at this, is a subdivision with an empty lot and a subdivision with the house on it. Whatever's going to happen on, I guess, one point oh one, whatever's going to be built there, we don't know, we can't evaluate. And it doesn't seem like the applicants are going to really give very much information as to what, what it's going to be. So it would seem to me that whenever something's, whenever they propose a little ghost of in there, the applicant is going to have to come back in front, front of the board again and pre, and present and, and present that application. So I, I, I don't know what other people's view is, but that tends to be my view.
Yeah, single family, um, proposed single family residences on single lots are not subject to a site plan review.
Yeah, so the applicant won't have to come back and, and so what's before us today is the, is the subdivision with the understanding that they'll comply with the ordinance and the R two ordinance and that conditions, a variety of conditions that were suggested by our staff and also by the Stork Preservation Commission are agreed to, um, including protecting trees and um, and unless I misunderstood, um, al- also agreeing to the, to the setback distances that are shown on the rendering that you provided that showed the subdivision lines, is that, that correct also?
That's correct.
Um, so, and those are more generous than the um, setbacks that are in the ordinance. Uh, so that i- is meaningful, but it will not come back to the board um, for, you know, design review or uh, anything that, that it will undergo a staff review is my under, understanding. Um, but it's not going to come back to the board, you know, once it's a once the house is signed for the site.
Well, well, Madam Chair, are we sure that there's not going to, this is not going to involve a variance of any type? I mean, you know, who, who, you know, it's not, it's, it's just not going to, to, that's not going to be.
No, in fact, we, we don't know that. I mean, they might come back with a um, um, to the, to the construction department, um, with a, a plan, a plot plan that shows uh, that there are setback by violations, in which case variance would be necessary if they want to pursue that, and that would have to come back to the board.
Right, what's before us tonight?
For the zoning board.
Is, is without variances. If they, if they design something for the site that requires variances, then they would have to come back.
And, and just, just to follow up, we don't need to propose, that can be done administratively if, in fact, a variance is needed. It's not as though we have to say as a condition, you know, if this is fine without, without, with, without, as long as there's not a variance.
Right, we don't have to say that. Um, but it would not be approved administratively, it would be approved by a land use board. I don't know if it would come back to us, or I, I think it would go to the zoning board. If a variance was necessary, was later necessary.
Okay. Mr. Bodigheimer?
I just want to thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to express my view that I, I just don't think that I've heard uh, you know, policy concerns that uh, you know, rise to the level of asking us to impose conditions that are beyond those that are in the ordinance. I mean, you know, you know, I understand that different actions trigger different sort of standards of review, but I mean, this is all, this is all zone R two, so that's, that's the controlling thing. I don't really see, I, I don't see how this is creating the condition that's uh, that's so unique that it calls us to come in and you know, make modifications with the ordinance already imposes. So I'm just, I'm just saying, I, I, I kind of view this as no action needed.
Are, are you okay, Mr. Bodigheimer, with, with requiring the conditions that they've a- already agreed to? Because I would like to do that.
As I understood it, and I'll acknowledge that I, that I, I had some trouble following all of those, but I mean, I.
It's a little bit more generous setback, it's.
Yeah, sure.
Not cutting down some trees.
I sort of, I sort of, I sort of was hearing some things being accepted as conditions that they felt were already conditions of, of the of, of zone, but I mean, yeah, I, I'm sure, if they want to say that they'll accept those conditions, that's fine, but I'm just, just not sure that there's anything that like I said, I just light touch, that's.
Okay. Thank you. Um, other comments from board members? Okay, um. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Quinn?
Just to be clear, all the, all the conditions that were suggested by the professionals were, were accepted by the applicant with the exception of any any suggestion or condition that would limit the size of the structure and impervious uh, of what eventually gets built. Correct? So we're saying, a- all we're hearing is that it will conform to the zoning and it could be anywhere between three thousand and square feet and what's the upper? The upper number in the report was like eight thousand square feet? Mr. Dobramowski, am I?
I'm sorry.
Am I, am I misrepresenting what you're saying in the report?
The FAR, under the FAR for one and a half acre lot, it could be in theory an eight thousand one hundred sixty-seven square feet. That would be all one floor at that point, obviously. Um, but, so that's, doesn't seem likely, but that's what's possible.
Okay. So I, I think that that is sort of the crux of concern, of the concern as articulated by the, the representative of the Homeowners Association. So, yes, I mean, as Mr. Schatzman reminded us time and time again, it will conform to R two. But whether it will be in character with the surrounding neighborhood is, is a um, it's something that, that's worth discussing by this board, if I read Mr. Dobramowski's um, comments in his report correctly. So, uh, I'm not saying that we should impose a condition, but it's not like we should not disregard the concerns of neighbors about the scale uh, of the, of the proposed house.
Can we go over um, the uh, conditions that the applicant has agreed to, or is it more appropriate to do that after someone makes a motion? Or, or Mr. Quinn, did you want to? Did you want to suggest um, a, a condition that addressed scale uh, i- in some way?
Well.
I'm, I'm trying to turn a path over here.
Made it clear that he, that there, that they would not consider such a condition to be lawful. And um, so I think as, as an exercise, I think it's um, you know, I think it's kind of superfluous at this point. I think that the best outcomes for uh, for subdivisions and houses that are built on single, for single family homes are communication between uh, the, the people who are doing this updividing and the neighbors, and I didn't get the impression that much communicate, much has been communicated. And again, that's not, it's not our. And again, that's not, it's not our, uh, it's not our place to impose, to force people to talk to each other, uh, to have a, the best possible outcome for everyone. I don't think this is a condition where, where neighbors of the thing don't build anything. Um, but I think there are that they've expressed concerns about the scale, which I, I get the sense that any condition that we put forward, uh, I believe that the term that was used, uh, by the applicant's attorney was, would be decided by someone in a black robe in Trenton. So, um, I, I think, given that, uh, you know, good luck.
I do think that the neighbors, um, appeal to talk to them and work with them is, um, a, a straightforward and good faith uh, outreach. And I really do hope that uh, either the applicant or whoever purchases this property, um, will do that because you know, being a good neighbor is no small thing. And, um, uh, so, you know, that, that is maybe not a condition that we can impose, but it's a strong recommendation and encouragement, I think. Mr. Quinn?
And Madam Chair, at, of my apologies if I, if I missed this, but I, I don't believe that when the engineer was sworn in that, did we hear his, um, his qualifications? Were they outlined?
No.
Uh, so I, I would suggest that maybe for the record, we ask the engineers been sworn, but that we get a sense of the qualifications just again, so we have a complete record.
Yeah.
Um.
You want to, okay, fine. He'll tell you all the, uh.
Well, Mr. Crussera, are, are you test, retestifying as an engineer on the project or as a, as an owner or?
He's a member of the owner, he's an engineer who designed it. And he will then, for to satisfy Mr. Quinn, which is legitimate.
Yeah.
Tell him all the projects you've done as a professional engineer in the state of New Jersey.
No, you know, he doesn't, he doesn't have to do that, just.
I think just as qualifications and licensing, and again, this is housekeeping, I, I'm not suggesting that we hear his entire CV. Um, just that we comply with, uh, with how this board operates. Especially since he is, he was testifying as, as an expert.
Mm-hmm.
So, I'm seventy-one years old. I was licensed in nineteen ninety-two as a professional engineer in state of New Jersey. Uh, I was working for a family civil engineering company for thirty years. I'm retired currently. I was participating in a lot of the projects, not only in this town, but through the whole New Jersey. One of the bigger project in town was a TPC as Napolana. Uh, I was doing also some single family homes, some minor subdivisions, et cetera. So, I was involved in two, but otherwise our company uh, was working on a lot of projects and were hooked up to a lot of developers over thirty years.
And we, we will agree to the location of the house where we say it, uh, where we show it. Cause that's important for the board to consider. It's far away.
Those, what are those setback distances, Mr. Schatzman? Do you? Or, 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 uh, Mr. Dobramilsky, what are they?
If you will, and I'll share the screen again with the subdivision.
Yes, please.
And Rich, you said you'd agree to the location of the house as shown on the plan? Yeah. It's very important.
So what I'm showing is the subdivision plant layout plan and what that is showing is the forty-four by eighty-two foot footprint, like we talked about. And that is shown with a forty-foot setback from Glen Drive and a fifty-foot setback from Mountain Avenue.
And what are required setbacks? The, how do those compare to the required setbacks in the zone?
So this is the, um, zone chart from the, uh, from the report from Derek Bridger and Dan Weisman, indicating that, uh, the setbacks from the front yard of Mountain Glen is twenty-five compared to they showed us forty and fifty. And the side yard setbacks would be fifteen, which, um, isn't necessarily a, a big problem for the new lot. Uh, the, the asterisk you see here is the structures on, that the existing lot that would have to be removed. Uh, to, to have compliance there, and the building height was thirty-five feet as, as discussed. So they're saying they will comply with these standards, uh, from the, um, the zoning. So it'd be, they're, they're saying they would cite the house in the, in the area that's currently open and that it would have something close to a forty-foot setback from Glen and fifty feet from Mountain Avenue is what I think I'm hearing.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, so which is gonna, which is gonna look very close and very big, uh, to folks who are accustomed to looking at that lawn. Um, but it's further, uh, than it could be. And so I think that that's, um, meaningful. Um, other, other comments or, and I, I understood you to say you agreed with the staff comment conditions on page two of, um, Mr. Bridger and Mr. Weisman's um, memo and also with the bike path easement, um, being revised to reflect the widening of the right of way and recorded in the deed.
Right.
Each of the properties and that you agreed to one through five of the staff comment uh, conditions on page five of that. And that you agreed to not remove the trees, but do remove the bamboo, which by the way, is going to be a hell of a task. And it's going to involve, uh, clearing and then mowing, 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 mowing for the next.
It's an invasive species.
It's awful. Yeah.
An invasive species.
Yeah, it's, but it's, it's bad. I'm glad you're doing that. Um, other comments or uh, suggested motion?
Well, could I, can we go through?
Mr. Muller, yes, please.
What I'd like to do is just go through all of the six, uh, recommendations, uh, or suggestions from HBC that's on page two of.
Oh, thank you.
Elizabeth's memo and, and just get the reaction of the applicant and maybe the reaction of the board as well.
Good. You've, you've got that in front of you?
I have it in front of me. So number one is, um, consider if it would be appropriate to request the front yard setback from Mountain Avenue for the new house to be set at the prevailing setback to the other houses within this development that have frontage along Mountain Avenue. Now, I find the same, Mr. Schatzman, they will, they will not agree to that.
That's correct.
And, and maybe, um, we can get some kind of sense from the board, um, as to whether that should be pursued, it should be discussed further or. I don't see any enthusiasm.
Well, I mean, my concern aside from issues Mr. Bodigheimer raised was that we don't know what the prevailing, nobody has said what the prevailing setback is unless, unless we do know that.
Can I comment on this?
Yes, please.
So, the prevailing setback was never in the township until two thousand sixteen. So, the Glen was not subject to the prevailing front yard setback. A few of the new houses across the street on Mountain Avenue have been subject to that. So, the houses in the Glen, the way the ordinance reads, you would take this, the setback on that side of the street within five hundred feet of the subject property. So, it's on the inside of the Glen. So, if there's less than three properties, you choose whatever setback there, that there is. You could use twenty-five feet. So there isn't any pattern here really to, to base a prevailing front yard setback on. The Glen, it's all interior and it doesn't front on mountain. Those are the backs of those houses. And then further on down mountain, which is really an historic area of more smaller lots, which are ill-suited for the one and a half acre zone. A lot of those lots are a quarter to a half an acre. Um, there is a bit more of a predominant setback there, but they're closer. It's almost like a village. So, um, I just wanted to pro- provide some context about the prevailing front yard setback, um, and how it's used and the history and, and in this situation, it would be very difficult to, to come up with anything, um, that would provide a meaningful setback, cause there's, there's nothing, there's no data to use, so.
Okay, thank you.
My comment. Thank you.
Okay, so that's one. And, um, it doesn't seem like there's, obviously, we know the applicant's position. It doesn't seem like the board wants to. Seems, uh, interested in pursuing that any further. Is that a, a correct reading of the board?
Yes.
Okay, then two, the size of the ha- new house should not shadow the presence of the historic house and should be respectful and exciting on the site and proximity to the historic house. Now, given its location, uh, I think they, and the agreement, um, by the applicant to, to that location, I think that, that deals with, with that to a considerable extent. I, and that I don't know that.
That is what I heard, and I, I heard Mr. Schatzman specifically say that the placement, um, w- was meant to be mindful of that issue. Is that correct, Mr.?
That's correct.
Okay. So I don't know that we need to. Does anybody feel differently?
Well, I think since they've agreed to it, it
It's already agreed.
Sense to put it in there.
Uh, yeah, location. I agree. Put it in there.
And, and it is a, an important issue.
Okay, so number two, as, um, as I read it and is, um, okay, it's fine.
Mr. Chow?
Um, Phil, you, you.
We can't hear you.
What do you mean by the location? Is it the footprint there, the, the dimensions that they show for the, the rectangular house?
I don't think it's, well, I, I did not understand the position of the applicant to be that it's the dimensions that, that the locate, they meant the location more generically in the spot where that footprint is shown, but, but not necessarily that, that size.
Okay, yes. Okay, yeah, that's, okay, uh, agreed. That makes sense. That, as long as you have the setback of forty from Glen, fifty from Mountain, but then how far it goes back into the yard, the footprint of the building, how far that goes back, we, we don't put any conditions on that, right?
As long, they just have to comply with the side yard setbacks that are in the.
Okay, and, and as long as you don't, uh, take down the trees and whatever, and then overwhelm the historical property, yeah.
Okay, just moving on with the, uh, suggestions by the Circus Vision Committee. Okay, it, it is nu- number three. It's recommended a, a condition be imposed on new lot one point oh one. That's one point oh two, right Dan?
Correct.
Okay. Requiring new building footprint, height and house square footage should be consistent with those within the development to integrate into the development. Now, that's something that, um, Mr. Schatzman has integrated, indicated they would not be willing to do, correct, Rich? And, um, what's the pleasure of the board?
I don't think, I don't get a sense that anyone wants to insist upon that.
Fair to say? Okay. Four, existing trees that run close to the new property line should be contained. Assuming they're in favorable condition, evergreen trees along claim drive should also be preserved. My understanding was the applicant was amenable to that. Yes, we agree to that. Okay. Five, if the new property owner of new lot one point oh two wishes to remove the existing tennis court, HBC would have no problem. I don't think we have to say anything about that. No, we, we don't want it. We, we're gonna look at the keeping it. It's a nice part of the house that will be built. Okay, and then the, uh, removal of the bamboo, we, we concur with the removal, removal of the invasive bamboo on the property. Yes, we're going to do that. Okay. Invasive species and it doesn't belong there.
Mm-hmm.
And then let's see. Just Dan Dobramilsky's memo, I think, um, a number of these points, maybe all of them have been covered. The board may wish to contemplate what an eight thousand one hundred sixty-seven square foot one-on-one and historic dwelling on this plot might entail to determine if limitations on lot development may be appropriate to preserve the character of the property and area of the community. I think the board is just, obviously, the applicant has made its, uh, position, uh, clear. And I think the board is, is indicated that it doesn't want to pursue that, correct? Okay. Then number two, few existing trees. Um, will, will need to be moved to accommodate grading and drainage for the new dwelling. But that will be subject to further review at the time of construction, um, permits and plot plan submissions. Um, that's. Any problem with, um, that?
No.
Okay.
I think they, they can, they, they, they agreed to try and save trees to separate the new house from the historic house. But it seems likely there may be one or two evergreen trees that may have to be removed to get the grading et cetera to work. So that was the, what I was kind of trying to say there, that.
Oh.
So.
If we have to remove the trees, we'll replace them. On the slight chance that we will, we will replace them. And, and can, and we will ask, we will talk to the arbers, the municipality as to, um, replacement trees, species, where they want them, et cetera, so forth, to give to complete the screening between the Knox House and the new house that will be built. That's, that, that's, that's valid.
Right, that's reasonable.
You don't, you don't expect to, or anticipate having to remove any trees that are along the frontage or would be.
No.
Front, these, these trees would be.
That's, that's because that's where, that's, that's one of the reasons why we put the house, we put it.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
Just bear with me for a second.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, um, and then, uh, a significant line of cherry trees, this is a, the last paragraph, uh, paragraph two of cherry trees are present along Mountain Avenue frontage. It's the route of the new, uh, utility line. Services will need to be carefully scrutinized to avoid the removal of trees in this line. I assume there's no problem with that. Yes, that's correct. And let, let me just go to my notes. I don't know that there's anything addition, additional. So that's it. You have, you have general conditions, don't you, Jerry? You know, paying the, uh, paying escrow fees, et cetera, so. Yeah, yeah, right. The general conditions. Yeah. I see the general conditions. They're okay with us. Rich, you're being awfully cooperative. I, I don't know what's happened. Yeah. That's because I'm turning eighty pretty soon. I've got a lot mellow than I used to be. Okay, so it's, um, basically minus subdivision approval with these conditions we just discussed. If anybody wants to make a motion.
So moved?
Moved by Mr. McGowan. Is there a second?
I second, second.
Seconded by Mr. Taylor. Uh, Carrie, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, of course. I'm sorry. Okay, that would be Mr., uh, Mr. Chow?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bodigheimer?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Hey, thank you very much for your time. We appreciate your consideration and the time you've given to this application. Cause there some issues there that need to be, uh, resolved and and I, for one, and on behalf of the applicant, thank you for your very, very, you know, insensitive, sensitive, um, back and forth with the applicant and understanding applicant's position. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And happy new year.
Happy new year to you, thank you for the, for the setbacks, for retaining the trees, et cetera, et cetera, and um. Uh, do, do uh talk to your neighbors, um, it it, there's uh no downside to that.
Yes, we will. Yeah, we will, we definitely will. We'll go over everything with them, okay?
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Um. In uh. In Mr. Cohen's absence. Maybe I should channel um. Benny Tompkins.
Alvin's got us covered, I think.
Al, Mr. McGowan?
I move to adjourn.
But they like the fact that maybe some.
Oh, Mr. Schatzman, you're uh not muted.
Ex parte communication there, I think.
We have a motion to adjourn, is there? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Very much, everybody, um, happy new year once again, and uh see you all in a couple of weeks, if not before.
Yeah, happy new year.
Happy new year, have a good night.
Bye now.